Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge, allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody, thanks for coming. All right, roll call vote, please. Roll call, I did that last time. Roll call, please.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
John Horvath.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Artie Bryson.
Here.
Tom Kruger.
Absent excuse.
Tom Futter.
Here.
Karen Straffan.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Before we get going, I'd like to make a motion and amend the agenda. Under four, new business, no wake signs, total of $1,400. And five, permit for a movie in the, for a group to show a movie in the park.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Everyone in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Bill's payable. Entertained motion. I'll make a motion, we pay the bills payable.
Support.
Any discussion? I have a little bit of discussion. Under the sewer fund, I just want to point it out, we had an emergency. And one of the pump, lift stations, the pumps went out. And if we didn't fix it like ASAP, we would've had a really messy problem down St. John's Drive. So, we basically, there's only one vendor, is that right, John? We get these from?
That's right.
And it is what it is, so I gave them okay to do that. It was cost us $6,951.25. So that is why that is in there. And it had to be done unfast. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
John Horvath?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Tom Futter?
Yes.
Karen Straffan?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Public comments relating to any business on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? Anything that we have on the agenda? Hearing none, just moving right along. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes of the board meeting of July 18th, 2016, and synopsis. Check reports, June Water Department report, June Building and Zoning report, Road Watch, liquor license transfer, communication to the police depart, from the police department dispatch, employee termination, request police department hire part-time officer Jason Schoen.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, highlight of the night, supervisors' report. Brace yourselves.
Worst thing in the world.
That's right. Went to, we had a meeting, and it was actually a township, county supervisors' meeting, and one of the speakers we had was a couple of guys from the county. And basically, they informed us, they're going to be looking at raising our landfill rates approximately $6 a ton. We now pay about $25.40 a ton. I think about a year and a half ago, they raised it up somewhere around $19 a ton. And so their rate's going to be about $32, $33 a ton. We did have some pointed discussion, and about what they're doing with the Canadian trash. And they are still accepting Canadian trash, they are hoping to get more.
At a lower rate.
Yes. You want to ask me how much?
How much?
Approximately $11.50 a ton they're charging the Canadians. I asked them how much it costs to process a ton of garbage in the landfills, approximately $7.50. So, I'm opposed to it, but you know, that's what they basically told us, that they're looking at raising it. And it is a closed county. In other words, there's a countywide ordinance, all the garbage in the county has to go to their landfill. We can't take it to Greenleaf, I think it's called, on 26 Mile, in Lenox Township. It would probably be cheaper for us to do it, because it's closer than the one that, up north. But since it is a closed county, we don't have that option. So, yeah, yeah.
Who closed the county?
They closed it by ordinance. In other words, they did.
The county did.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to get this straight.
In other words, they can't accept, it's a closed county, in other words, they can't accept garbage from Macomb County and Oakland County.
Well, they refuse to.
Well, they can't, by the way.
Right, by ordinance.
Right, by ordinance.
Right.
But, on the same token, our, all their, they own our garbage.
You're talking about the dump, I'm talking about the commission.
Right. So, I'm talking about the landfill.
Right.
So, I just want to let you know that that will probably be coming down the pipe.
Contact your county commissioner, folks.
On that. County is also looking at doing a countywide ORV ordinance, and I just put it on everybody's table. I just received that today, what they are proposing. And if the, I want you to read this over, and if you have any suggestions or anything, let me know. They are having a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, September 15th, 2016.
Yeah, where?
In the Yale Municipal Offices.
Oh, Yale.
Yeah, really convenient.
Oh, yeah.
But, I'll go up there, and...
You bet.
They, I had the question if, they're putting in here, so townships, if they want, they can opt out of the ordinance? And the way I kind of read it, if you opt out, you're saying you don't want ORVs on your roads. We, there's only two townships in the county that has their own ORV ordinance, it's us and IRA, and they're very similar. And I asked, actually, the county's attorney, because I'm under the impression that if they pass it, their ordinance will trump ours. In other words, it would supersede ours. I'm not really clear on that, but I wanted to get that verified. In other words, if we want people to be able to use our roads with ORVs, it would be under the county ordinance and not ours. I want to find that out before the public hearing. And I hope to have an answer to you for that at our next board meeting. So, okay, I'm getting some rough estimates on different road projects, and see if we can start thinking about what to do, what to put out for bid this winter. Remember, if we do, if we put it out for bid in the winter versus in the late spring, we usually save about 25, 30 percent. And so I'm going ahead and getting some guesstimates and some estimations on that. I did receive word, the Bayview Shores, Culver, we did get our permits, and the bid was let out. It actually came in about $70,000 less, $80,000 less than what was originally anticipated, so that's, that's really good news. They, they are currently doing, the outfit that got one to bid, is doing one job now, then they have a second job to do, and then they'll be hitting Bayview Shores. So, we're kind of guessing October-ish. Heard rumors that, it's not confirmed yet, that the Merrill Street Bridge project may be put off from this fall till spring. They haven't put it out for bid yet, I thought, I expected that they were going to do that at the same time, has not happened yet. So, I will find more about that project also. I want to give you an update, the lawsuit between Ridgeway and Clay has been dismissed. And I am almost positive that the lawsuit between McLean and Clay will be dismissed, if not today, in the next couple of days. We met with, I met with MERS at a meeting that I had with them, it's actually, they're at our supervisors' meeting. They changed a few things on how they determine our rates going forward. In the past, they assumed that we'd be getting an 8 percent return on all our funds invested with them. They lowered that to 7.85. And then also, there's, they use a smoothing factor. In the past, it's been 10 years, they changed that to five years. In other words, if someone, something gets hit horribly, we have a bad year in the market and you lose money. In the past, they would smooth that out, going 10 years, to catch up with the costs and how they, how they determine the rates. They changed that to five years. Good year, good news, bad news, it's, yeah, it will cost you more in the short term, but that's the bad news, but the good news is, you get through it quicker and you rebound quicker. MERS is complicated, I'm actually starting to get a handle on it, but boy, it's...
It's crazy.
It is crazy. Our $200,000, $200,000 gallon reserve tank over at Ainsworth was inspected, and is recommended that we recoat the exterior of the tank, and do an abrasive blast clean coat, coat and the pit, and pit piping coat. That's pretty much it. I think I got it right. An estimated cost of about $25,000. And then they, they're also estimating that we put in a floating and press current cathodic protection system, that's so it stops pitting. Now, that's about, estimated cost of about $22,000, with another eight grand for both the projects in engineering. I recommend to the board that we do the coating, and we'll have to put it out for bid and see what exact cost we do get, but Dixon, our engineers, handles that for us, and they do an excellent job. But put, put the coating and the pit piping, painting and cleaning and the blasting out this year, this current budget year, and the following budget year, we'll do the cathodic protection. They basically said it should be done in the next two years, unless the board directs me to do both this year. If we did that, we're going to have to adjust the budget a little bit, but...
We don't need to.
We don't need to. So that's what I'm going to recommend to the board, and we're going to go ahead, if all you got to do is not tell me to go ahead and start getting that going. Also, I was looking at the outstanding debts we have as a township, if you recall, and we restructured three bonds into one, oh, about a year and a half ago. And, you know, doing that saved the township hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's just looking at what we have left, it's in the Water Department. We have a small one out there for the Fraser Water Expansion, and I'm recommending to the board, we owe about $54,000 on it, and right now, we're paying 5 percent interest. I'm recommending that we go ahead and retire that, and if everyone kind of nods their head, I'll start the ball rolling on that. We can definitely afford it, and it's going to save us, you know, 5 percent on paying interest on that. At that point, you only, well, we have the tenure of nine now that we refunded, and then we have about four years left on the water plant expansion. And like I've mentioned a few times to that board, or this board, once we retire on that, I think we should seriously look at redoing that main along M29. We have an 80-year-old main that desperately needs to be replaced. Basically, it goes from Nook past Johnny Leagus somewhere, is that about it?
Willacort.
Willacort. And, because other than that, our infrastructure would be top-notch, so. All right, I did that one. Oh, this is going to be an agenda item, but I was, per discussion, our last meeting, we were looking at getting some no-wake signs. I'll talk more about that in our, when we get to the agenda. A while ago, the board directed me to do some research on what rights we had, if someone wanted to, we actually were approached, someone was looking to buy property in Clay, put up a big pole barn or a big building or structure, and then sublease out sections of that to medical marijuana caregivers. So we'd have, you know, several people or several plants in one area. And I kind of caught me by surprise, and a few other people. Met with our attorneys and our planner, they are confident that we can stop that from happening as our ordinance now stands, but they are going to write, we just had this meeting, they're going to write a report up for the board. I just wanted to give you a heads up, that was, I don't know, a couple of months ago, that popped up. The Planning Commission, they had, they held their public hearing last Wednesday for their Parks and Rec plan, and I thought it was very well-attended. Lot of, lot of good points and good ideas came from that, and actually, we're going to be starting to work on some of those, you know, right away. I thought it was very, very good meeting, and they got a lot of good input. Joanne was there, I know, Cindy, you were there for a little bit.
It was very good, yes.
And I also talked to Dennis Wilson, he's the guy that runs the state parks and all the, the access, DNR access sites in our area. And we're looking at places for kayak launches. And under the county Parks and Rec, we can get free kayak launches, they're handicap accessible. If we went out and bought them, they probably cost about $35,000 apiece. And the county's looking for them, they have to be on municipal-controlled property. I'm going to meet with them this week, Dennis, about the possibility of putting one at the boat ramps over in, right before you get into Elginak, across from Kroger, and also another one down at the launch by Deckers. Now, I was also thinking about, you know, we need something on the Crispin Drain and a couple other sites. And I asked them the question, okay, we know it's got to be, you know, the property has to be open to the public. I asked them, could we do this on private property if they sign a 20-year easement, public easement to the docks? And they checked it out, and they can. So I'm actually in the process of seeing if I can get two more, one behind the Schoolhouse Grill, and there's a guy down the flats that rents kayaks, and he would be willing to also do that. I think it would be a win-win, gives people more access, and, yeah, and...
They get a free dock.
They're really nice, they are really nice. And then also, I had more talks with the DNR, I didn't put this in here, we talked to them about before, over on the island, they have the first turnout going down the South Channel where people can park. And then, right across the street, it's marshy, it's close, well, they have some property, I think it's about 150 feet wide, maybe 200 feet if I remember. The state owns property right directly across the street. I asked them about putting in a small boat ramp there, because they can park in the DNR property right, you know, across the street from...
You're talking about on the South Channel side?
Yeah, yeah. And put the ramp on the South Channel, and they park on the, on the, on the marsh side. And they came, kind of gave me the thumbs up on it, and I'm going to be pushing that, because if you don't, it's just going to be, sit there and planning. But that, because there is not a boat launch on the whole South Channel side, right up to, you get to Elginak, you know, the main river before it splits. All right, that's that, that's that. Also, met with Lori Eschenberg, she's in charge of the Blue Way Trails and all the bike paths and walking trails in, in the county. We toured the Crispin Drain for a blue trail and for signage and access points, and she was pretty excited about it. And then we met with the DNR back there, we went back in the, in the reserve. And it's, she's ordering signs, directional signs for it, and actually, there's, and once we get in the DNR, there's actually like three different legs, they can go to the left and get out to, close to the South Channel, along the canal by the dike. You can get into Yax Bay in the Musk Moog, and then there's a different canal they can get into, Cut, where they portage over the pump, there's another one on the right, and that's about another three-mile canoe trip, and it'll take her right to the middle channel. So we're going to, they're going to rate them, you know, beginner, intermediate, and advanced, and...
That's a good idea.
Yeah. And before we really opened it up, I wanted to get the signage in there.
I want some good signage, and tell people to take a GPS in their bottom mark.
And...
Get lost.
Also, it is official, and three years ago, we asked to open it up a little bit, they kind of laughed at us. But it is official, the whole DNR state property on Harson's Island is open to anybody and everybody from January 2nd to August 30th. In other words, you can go on all the dikes, this is even in the refuge. You can go on all the dikes, you can go paddle around in all the canals, it is.
It's during duck season.
You can't during duck season.
The late...
January 2nd, August 30th.
It starts, it starts January 2nd...
Yeah.
...to August 30th, that's what, that's what they handed me. So, there's no bike, bikes are not allowed on the, on the dikes, but you can walk it. And I plan on really marketing this to all the Autobahn people, because they, there is a tremendous amount of birds back there. And I know, they listed four or five endangered birds, some kind of tern, I don't know what they are, but...
Terns, black terns.
Black terns, there's blue herrings, there's eagles, there's tons of stuff out there. Maybe we can get some, and they would be happy to get, do tours out there. They are going to have an open house in October, I'll get more information on that. We will be doing a blue, a ribbon-cutting ceremony in May, officially opening the Crispin Drain once we get those signages up. So, it's pretty exciting.
Where would that be, at the DNR?
Where we do it?
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll figure it out in May, but I would do it behind the Schoolhouse, right on the drain, and everyone can go paddle. Oh, yeah, also this past week, we hosted a SNCOG meeting here with the CISM, that's Anchor Bay, oh, boy, it's the Fragmities people. It's some kind of, it's a long acronym, invasive weeds and this and that, and that meeting went very well. We hosted a consumer safety seminar, it was about two weeks ago Wednesday, and that one was phone scams and internet scams. It was, they thought it was well-attended, I talked to a few people that were actually at it, and they said it was wonderful presentation, it was great knowledge. And like I say, this is through the Attorney General's office, and we're going to be hosting these one a month, a total of six of them. Our next one is going to be e-s scams and phone scams. And I don't have that date, it's the third Wednesday.
17th of May.
17th.
It said the first one was e-s scams and phone scams.
Yes, okay. That is...
August 17th is the Identity Fest.
Yeah, that was last week. So it'll be September 21st. We'll get more info on that. But it's a great program, and it's very well-received.
The speaker that they sent, she'll be at all of them, and she's very good.
Yes.
Very, very knowledgeable.
I did want to make a kind of a statement, we, someone put up a sign, it's a political sign, and, and I've gotten a lot of, a few phone calls and emails saying that it's offensive. I'm not going to say where or what it says, but I did check into it, we do have an ordinance, Clay Township Zoning Ordinance, prohibited signs which contain statements, words, pictures of obscene, pornographic, or immoral character. In other words, you can't do that. It's, it's an interesting question, I know, things I get myself into. Because there is freedom of speech and property, personal property rights, private property rights. I checked into it, the particular word that everybody's complaining about was held up by the Supreme Court, and they basically said, that word is not obscene, pornographic, or immoral. So that means that we can't, under our ordinance, make them take it down. It was, went to the Supreme Court, the ACLU took it up there, and they won, and I don't think we could, if it was challenged, we wouldn't be able to enforce it. I was going to send the personal letter asking them to take it down, but I don't, if they don't, I don't, we can't force them. So I just wanted to make that mention. All right, almost done. Music in the park's going great, the fourth, we have Dune Abiders, and the 11th is the Teen Angels. Last week, we had Burnwood, I bet you we had 450 people there, it was a good event. We have Farmer's Market every Wednesday from 2:00 to 5:00. The Elginak Historical Society is having their craft and vendor show this Saturday, August 6th, that's usually a good event. And August 10th, Wednesday, free health fair, free screening, blood pressure checks, produce giveaway, kids' activities, Clay Fire Department Smokehouse Demo, and it's going to be at the Downriver Community Services behind Rite Aid, from 12:00 to 4:00. Again, free health fair screenings, blood pressure checks, free produce, and kids' activities, throw the kids in the smokehouse. So, I think that's it for the supervisors' report. What am I forgetting?
There's the list right there.
Yep, yep, I got it, it was September 21st is the Identity Fest.
Just so you know, Artie, when the band is in the park, it's very audible on Harson's Island.
Good.
We won't even charge you for it.
You can go and sit in the bleachers on John's farm.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, unfinished business, we have none. New business, entertain a motion, we have Resolution 201630 eliminates the Special Assessment District and Joe Char lighting.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201630 eliminating the Special Assessment District for Joe Char lighting.
Support?
Reason by, it was a while ago, they used to have a lot of them out in that area, and I'm not even sure if it's really legal we do this, because Joe Char is a private road, not a public road, and for us to do this, it would require a special assessment that they approved, and...
Should we hold off and...
No, this is, we're just going to eliminate it, just like we did, we used to have them for Stark, Inglewood, all those out there.
There was a resolution that eliminated the whole Isle subdivision, and it dropped off of all of them but Joe Char.
Oh, okay. I'm glad, I was going to ask about what's the history of this.
We caught on to it, and believe this really probably should not happen to us one either, so. so...
Okay.
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2016-30 eliminating Special Assessment District Joe Char lighting.
Well, you just did that.
We did that.
Oh, we already did it?
Cindy...
That was a great second.
Sorry.
That was the best second I ever heard. Oh, okay, the best third.
I was checking to see what duck season was in January.
What'd you find?
January 1st.
Alright, we're good. Alright, we have motion and lots of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Brason.
Yes.
Tom Federer.
Yes.
Karen Straffan.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
John Horvath.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine. Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, next, we have Fire Department building maintenance painting, and this actually paints both stations. As, we were actually gonna, we budgeted to do one and then the other, but it came in below budget, so that we did for the one building, takes care of both of them. And we're, it's recommending that we accept the bid from Creative Walls for the amount of $6,800. Includes the paint Sherwin-Williams, duration, doing the trim doors, two colors, paint two colors per building, spot prime is needed, power washing before.
And this is for both, both fire departments?
The only difference I saw, Daryl, is this guy from Creative gonna caulk too? Because that's...
Is it in the book?
No.
No.
That might be why it's so much cheaper.
I've had some, well, there's not a lot of caulking. We just did the building three, four years ago.
Okay.
I'll make sure it's taken care of.
So, as I said, there's not a lot of caulking, we could probably just caulk it ourselves if needed.
I'll make a, go ahead, Karen.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the quote for $6,800 from Creative Walls for prepping and repainting of both stations.
Okay, motion and support for paying both Fire Departments for $6,800, coming out line M206000933. Any more discussion?
On, Daryl, on the, one on the mainland, inspect for rotted wood. Now, I know they, you don't know if there's...
Cement board.
If you've got rotted wood or not.
Cement board.
Yeah, okay. That was my question, would it be extra?
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Third, accept the St. Clair County Prosecutor's Grant and purchase of PBT units, a total of $1,820. PBT is Personal Breath Tester. Those are the guys that you blow into to see how much...
Portable.
Yes, you've consumed.
Or preliminary. We were both wrong.
Are they? Preliminary? Yeah, they're smoked it. Did you know what they stand for?
How long are you gonna let them struggle?
She's sitting there laughing. Preliminary breath test units.
That's funny.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept the St. Clair County Prosecutor's Grant in the amount of $1,800 and purchase, does it say how many?
Seven.
Seven. Preliminary.
Okay, we have motion and support. Just so everybody knows, basically, the county, it's money in, money out, the county's writing us a check for the $1,820, and then we, they give it to us, and we buy them from the company that supplies them. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposes? Motion carries.
Who seconded?
What's that?
Who seconded?
Who seconded that one? Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Tom did. Just ask me, you know.
I do.
Hey. We're just checking.
You didn't shut me up the last time, though.
We are just checking to see if you guys are awake out there or not.
Who's that that said that last, who's that?
Okay, moving right along, before this gets worse. There's a meeting or two, we had a couple people ask us or tell us, I think it was when the sheriff was here presenting, about the no-wake issues and problems that we were having, and in certain areas of the river, and, you know, a lot of it is education, and I said that we would do some research on getting some no-wake signs. I got a quote, and these will be four foot by four foot, be the no-wake with the little, the 200 and 600 rule underneath it. The total cost will be $1,400 for 10 signs. They'll be made out of plywood, painted, and then have, yeah, the vinyl stickers put on, on top of it. And what we'll do, we kinda want them dispersed in certain places, you know, maybe a couple on Dickerson Island, a couple on Mill Channel, North Channel, and down, you know, by, down by Deckers too. Also, it's not in this motion, I'm just gonna inform the board, we did get a quote for 30-yard signs. We were thinking we could put them in, give them to people in the beginning of the canals. It just says no-wake, because there is no-wake in the canals, and they have issues there in the canals of people going fast. So, we can put them on a couple of the canals, stick them in the, in the people's yards, if they're willing to do that, I'm sure. A lot of people will be. I think we're about 300 bucks for that. So, but I'm looking for a motion, approval to do the 10 four-by-four no-wake signs at a total cost of $1,400. I don't have any writing, I just got a verbal quote today.
Who's doing it?
Sign waves in Clay Township. I could shop it a little more also. I know that, they actually did the ones for the county, as we're using the same artwork that the county did.
So, the, you just want the 1,400 for the 10, you're not talking the extra 30?
We, we could do the, make a 1,700 if you wish, and that would also include the 30-yard
I'll make a motion to that effect, that we spend $1,400 for the 10 no-wake signs to be put out in the river, and $300 for the 30-yard signs for the property owners, for their yards.
Support?
Do we have any more discussion on that? Everyone thinks it's a good idea, and go forward with it?
Sure.
On a side note, it might, I don't know who would do it, maybe the DNR, if they would. There are several, several maps of no-wake zones.
Yeah.
It would be nice if they put them at their ramps.
I can talk to Dennis Wilson on that.
Because a lot of people don't know.
Right, I know it. And I don't wanna rehash too much, but...
Most people are just looking, if they see a buoy, then they know, but there aren't buoys in, like the stocks.
Right. And I do have, in the process of, and I, I don't know if it even worked this year, because, you know, you gotta get permits from the DNR and the Coast Guard, about throwing a couple buoys out in a couple different spots for, it's like a floating sign. And I did get some costs online, I can't, you know, they're, I don't know, 300, 400 bucks a piece. But, but there's a process, that's gonna take a while to do that.
You need an old 350 Chevy engine, black, and a bunch of cable.
Yeah, exactly. So...
Works every time.
So, okay, we have a motion for 10 four-by-four signs and 30-yard signs, no-wake signs, for a total of $1,700. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. For, or fifth, just came in today, we have the Cup Master sent this, they want to do a movie in the park, and it is on August 20th, a Saturday. It'll be pretty much what we did in May, it'll be on that far end. And they're not gonna charge anything, it's gonna be free to all. And they're looking for our approval to hold this event.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cubs.
Support? Yes.
To utilize...
No charge.
Utilize the park for their movie in the park on August 20th at no charge.
Yep, support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? They, they have their insurance, the, that's what we were waiting on, their liability insurance on the guy that's gonna bring in the movie screen.
And its license.
And its license. So, ASCAP doesn't yell at us, or them. Motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. You wanna let him know? Or who has the contact info?
Cindy.
Okay, okay, make sure we let him know that we're good to go. Alright, public comments. Do we have any comments from the public? I think they're all sleeping. No public comments. Moving right along, board member comments. Joanne.
No, I don't have anything at this time, except...
You always say no except.
I don't have anything except.
But, that's like Artie saying, you know, he's gonna do the supervisor's report.
I got this online, I mean, email from the Marine City Drain, that they're doing that cut, and I was just thinking that maybe down the road, you could talk about that a little bit.
Yep.
And, not today.
Not today.
Not today. But it looks like it's an interesting project.
Yeah, they're gonna be doing some...
Yeah, down at the Cotterville.
Right. That's the, that's the drain that starts, actually in Elginak, right by People Regard's House.
Because it's on our property.
And then it goes across our property, and then into Marine City, basically behind the state park, they got a big drain project going on.
And other than that, don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Mr. Horvath.
Question for John. That tank that we're gonna repair and stuff, what is that worth, John? If you had to replace it?
I think it was around $800,000.
How much?
$800,000.
$800,000 for the new tank.
Okay.
So, we'll spend...
But that's what, my point is, proportionately, it's, it's a, it's a good investment.
Right.
And just to know after he repairs that we need to do that, we've been budgeting for that for the last five years.
I understand that also.
Three and a half.
But they don't.
Okay, three and a half.
Yeah, that's why I got in.
You know, again, like Joanne said, everybody should vote tomorrow.
Yeah, we've been, we've been in the, in the, in the water and sewer funds, we've been holding it alongside, so I think it's 8,000 per year for tank maintenance, 86,000 a year for things that we have to do in the water treatment plant. Because, you know, you can get, go three, four years, five, six years without spending any money, then all of a sudden, you need new filters, and it costs, you know, half a million dollars. So, we have a 10-year projected asset replacement plan there, and, and we determined, you know, based on estimates, you know, it was about 86,000 a year, we gotta set aside to keep us running smooth. So, you don't wanna think, okay, we're, our budget looks great, and you have a big...
Artie, when we retired that debt, we saved 5% interest. What does that amount to?
Well, it was, there was three bonds, and they were between 5% and 7%. In hindsight, I would've done the, the existing bond that we're paying two and a half for the next four years for the water plant. But at the time, they estimated that when we refund it, or what we did, we basically, it's like when you redo your mortgage for your house, you get a cheaper interest rate, is basically what we did. We took these three bonds that were really underwater. They were for doing the water expansion in the back roads of Clay Township, they were for, on Harson's Island too. And they, and then one was for Colony Road, because there was work down, down there. And they were, because of poor assumptions when they were originally done, and they were under, they were all underwater for, to a tune of about a million dollars.
But wasn't it also the fact that when somebody paid it off?
Well, that's what the assumptions, they, they...
The money went into general instead of...
Yeah, that was, that was it too.
That was a mistake.
Right. The assumptions were, like on the Harson's Island, they're gonna have another 250 water taps, you know, paying into it for, you know, the 15 or 20 years, it was a 20-year bond. And, and the same thing in the out islands, or the out, the back roads. And then what happened too, it was assumed that we'd be collecting interest from the taxpayers on it for, it was like 5%, 6% interest. Well, interest rates dropped down, so a lot of people paid it off early. So, when they, when they, when they originally did the bonds, they were assuming that we were gonna make, be making this, this money, another 6% on the money. And that was another poor assumption. And then some of them, when they were paid back, they, it didn't go, it went to the wrong fund. This was, this happened last 15 years. And so, we, when, when I talked to the bonds people, they estimated that, well, we'll refinance this bond, you have to sell it on the open market, and it would probably get an interest rate about two and a half to two and a quarter. And they recommended not just leave the water plant bond alone for the expansion, but lo and behold, it was really cool, when we did refinance it, people started, they had one-hour window to call the cell phone, it was, I've never seen it, and all of a sudden, I think Comerica was the first bank, and they bid around 2 and 1/2% for the bond, and then another guy called, another one, some outfit in Kansas City, actually, ended up purchasing our bond for, they go four decimal places, it was basically 1.87 blah, 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 interest rate. I mean, it was like free money, but we got such cheap interest rate, because Clay Township has standards and poor, is AA+ which is the, municipalities can't get any better. It's the golden goose. I mean, it's, it's just, can't get any better. And that's why we're able to do it such a good interest rate.
At that time, we'd never expected to get a rate that low.
No, no, we were hoping for two and a quarter.
I thought it was a mistake, but...
Yeah, we were hoping for two and a quarter, but it did save us a ton of dough, and thank God, and it bailed us out of a, I mean, four or five years from now, or at then, I should say nine years from now, we'd be looking, okay, we're not collecting anything for this money, and we still owe a million dollars. You know, and I, you know, I wouldn't wanna pass that problem to anybody, but we fixed it. So, I don't know how I got onto that. It was John.
Yeah, I know. I asked a dumb question.
No, that's alright.
You know, you can, give us another supervisor's report.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cindy, you have anything?
I do.
Good.
Provided that you get this posted early enough. I just wanna remind everybody there's no cross-voting. It's a primary, so it's either Democrat or Republican. Can't vote for back and forth between them.
I'll post it on Facebook.
Yes, I have already, but, yes, we can put it on our township website to remind everyone. On that, get out and vote.
So, you're either Democrat or Republican tomorrow?
Yes, one or the other. If you're voting Democrat, there's not much to vote on. Don't feel you need to vote more on the other side, because it'll spoil your ballot.
And all the millages, they're all bipartisan?
Yes, yes.
Karen?
No.
No? Mr. Federer?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think it's preposterous that the, that the county is increasing the tipping fees, not only that, but at such a high percentage, and the fact that we don't, we don't pay as much as the people who bring trash in from Canada.
from Canada, and not only that, but I don't believe they will tell us how much money they receive from Canada.
Well, I kinda, kinda pushed them a little bit at our meeting, because they're always vague, I heard a number between 14 and 15 dollars a ton.
No, no, I'm talking about how much they receive annually.
Oh, oh, I know.
They won't tell us.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that, that's a bunch of, uh, garbage. And then the other thing I wanna talk about...
Remember our sign ordinance here.
I didn't, I don't know about, you'll have to show me that.
Yeah.
And then, and then we've got County of St. Clair, we got, we got the commission, the, the St. Clair County Commissioners, uh, looking at adopting an ORV ordinance, and for, I don't know, what was it, two or three years we'd asked them to do it, and they said...
2011, they were looking at it.
Yeah, they weren't gonna, they weren't, they didn't wanna touch it, they, you know, no. So, then when you get to the back here, uh, just a little snippet, it says here, allocation of fines and damages, okay? So, our officers catch somebody doing, there's, you know, somebody doing something they're not supposed to do, and, uh...
Half coast of the road.
We write them for it, and then, and then it says here, yeah, 50% to the St. Clair County Sheriff for ORV enforcement and training, and then, uh, another 50% of the fine will go to, uh, the Board of St. Clair County Road Commissioners, be used for repairing damage to roads and the environment that may have been caused by ORVs for, and for posting signs indicating ORV speed limits, blah, blah, blah.
Goes to the general fund.
Right.
So, once again, we get zero?
Well, so, okay, so wait a minute now.
Okay.
It says that the county treasurer shall deposit all the fines and damages collected under this ordinance into a fund to be designated as the ORV fund.
Mm-hmm.
The county board of commissioners shall appropriate revenue in the ORV fund as specified by MCL, blah, blah, blah. Do you think for a second, for one iota of a second, that Clay Township would receive any money out of that to fix the shoulders of our roads that get tore up by ORVs?
Maybe a little bit, that goes to the county road.
Not a chance.
But not, maybe, maybe the county road, but not the other half. Yeah, how, how the, the state set up the, to allow us to pass ORV ordinance, they said half has to go to the county road.
Right.
And then half can go to whoever's enforcing it.
That would be us.
And that would be us.
So, they're taking us out of the equation?
Well, that's why I'm asking, you know, how it works, if their ordinance trumps our ordinance or not, and I wanna get that question answered.
The question is if we opt out, can we maintain our own?
Right, and that's, that's the other thing.
And I highly recommend we do that.
Right. Um, because there's, basically, they, they, they put on there, if you're on a paved road, the road cannot, the miles per hour has to be four, it can be 40 or below, in other words, you can't take your ORV on a 45 mile an hour speed limit road, uh, that's paved. Now, if you had, there's an unmarked paved road, it's Slavimar, they're 55, because they're out in the country, the way this law that they're proposing is that, um, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to take your ORV on it. Um, I assume all the gravel roads, uh, that are, aren't, aren't labeled, uh, you can because it says gravel, not paved, that one ordinance, it's kinda ambiguous.
We should all go to the public hearing.
Well, I, I, I'm going to find out exactly if their, if their ordinance does trump ours or not, or supersedes it or not, but, uh, if it doesn't, you know, we're okay. Uh, if it does, though, I'm gonna write a letter and probably go up to Yale for that meeting.
Just, just from going through this before the meeting, and then, you know, reading through it, just in the limited amount of time that I have, we spent way more time and effort on ours.
Well, yeah. Well, I don't know how much...
We spent a long time on ours.
Well, yeah, well, well, we waited because we assumed they were gonna do it, then, I think around 2013, they said they weren't, so that's when we started getting it going. Ours and IRA is very similar. We, we, uh, basically, you can go on any, all of our roads except the M roads, the M154, M29, and we, we, we have people staying off of Marsh Road, north of Jankoff, just because there's a couple accidents, couple fatality ORV accidents up there, and there's no shoulders, and that road scared me, and everybody else I talked to about that. Uh, other than that, is, you're pretty well open, 25 mile an hour speed limit, you gotta stay to the right. Um, and IRA is the same way, I think IRA is, they, they don't, can they go on Palms? I, I think that Palms is restricted on IRA, if I remember reading it.
26 mile road that you don't want either?
Or, and 26 mile road, right, Palms and 26 mile road, so...
Cindy, mention where the meeting is next time.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that. So, I have something to talk about, it's my turn.
Right.
Our next, our next meeting is on Harson's Island, the second meeting in August, usually on Harson's Island, so, uh, and, uh, everyone, don't forget to vote, vote often, and, uh...
Vote for me?
It, it's, it's funny, because the sign ordinance, you know, I, I wanted to do a, some type of a township ordinance where requiring a time limit when people can put their political signs up and, and take them down, but same thing, the Freedom of Information, or the, the Right to Speak Act, you can't restrict the, even the length of time or the message on political signs, so, uh, but I encourage people to take their signs down after the election, and hopefully you'll have to put them back up in November, so...
What happens if you take somebody else's sign down when you're taking yours down?
Call them, tell them it's in your garage. We used to do that. Used to. All of a sudden, I have signs in the back.
Thankful.
Yes, all of a sudden, I get all these signs in the back of my van, where'd these come from? I don't know. So, all right, one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Ayes.
Ayes.
Thank you for coming.
Ayes.
You don't have to vote on that one, believe it or not. Thanks again for coming.